All right, folks, would you please stand and join me in the budget of leach?
I would leave this to the dialogue of the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is the October week media, the town of Canada, they go planning board. Thanks for coming out. We're tuning in. There's some new people I haven't introduced them posted the dice in a while. Let me see if I still remember who everybody is. Karine Hatch is our recording secretary. Kim Burke is our remote facilities coordinator. Active tonight is our alternative member, but sitting in for Mark Tollworth is Tim Schneider. Mark is away, so he's excused. Got Scott Neil playing board member, Amanda Van Leek and playing board member. Bob will course playing board member Chuck Euler playing board chairman. Sarah Reynolds, who is our town planner, Kristen Nadler, our attorney and Eric. I want to make sure you know. Eric Cooper, who represents MRV, our engineers. Okay, we have a fairly manageable agenda tonight, so it shouldn't take too long to get through this. When comes will follow the agenda is published. When it comes to your portion of the agenda, do you have something to address the same word on which please come to the podium, give us your name and dress? Give us your comments, questions, whatever, if it's someone not related to the applicant, if it's the applicant himself. He or she said herself, please give us that presentation as to what you intend to do with your application. The board will then deliberate and hopefully have reason to take action this evening. I want to point out our two emergency exits to the right and left. We need to leave the room, please go to those exits. Anything else to do this test with housekeeping? I guess not. First thing is the privileges of your on our agenda. If anyone here is representing someone who wants to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, please do so now. If not, we will move on with the agenda. Anyone privilege of the floor? If not, we will move on to our first agenda item. By the way, I should mention we had no required legal posting with legal notices. With the Daily Messenger because we haven't continued public hearing and no other public hearings on the agenda, so there's no legal notice required. So the first item on the agenda is a continuation of public hearing regarding CPN twenty twenty four oh nine one. Michelle Clark, representing the Yvonne Whitmore Children LLC. And that's a property of thirty four oh seven West Lake Boulevard. Is a special use permit request to expand the occupancy of the short term rental from twelve to eighteen occupants. We we did discuss this at our last meeting. We've given the applicant some homework to go to do, and I think for the most part he has responded, they have responded. So Jeff, do you want to? Come up and address the board as to what you supply?
We have Rick Whitmore on the on the line here. He didn't want to speak. He was the one who made the submission, so.
Okay.
Prefer to Rick.
Rick had anything to add to what we had talked about last month?
Yeah, good evening to everybody. Can you hear me okay?
Sure can.
Okay, great. Yes, my name is Richard Whitmore, Rick Whitmore. I am one of the six owners of this property. My sister Jeff's wife sitting there, Michelle is also an owner. I believe, like you said, we've been through this. We did complete all six or seven items that were requested at the last meeting, including getting probably perhaps foremost, I don't know, but foremost, perhaps that the code enforcement inspector did come out and and issue a certificate that was favorable. As well as some additional updates on our statement of operations and our parking layout to just restrict the parking to the six slots we have by the home and exclude the five overflow spot spots that are part of the neighborhood. So I think everything has been provided. Any any questions from the board?
Thank you for providing that information. Yes, we did get the certification from the code enforcement officer. We also got a copy of the Finger Lakes Premier Property brochure that you use for the property. And I assume that will have to be if you're successful in getting the additional occupancy, you'll have to amend that to some degree. You did confirm that there is no HOA or no common maintenance or involved with the Westlake Boulevard itself. So I guess in theory or practicality, the five spaces up top are worth the common good, I guess, for anyone to use as they see fit. So I'm glad we're not including those spaces as part of your your count. Right. We're limiting it to the six spaces down on the property itself. So that's that's
That's right. The only comment I would make, sir, is, you know, we do have those overflow that our community. They are right above our homes, so it's kind of natural that they could be used. We don't generally need them. We have plenty down below by the house, as you probably heard in the prior meeting. I know some neighbors were a little concerned about parking congestion. And I only mentioned the five above because, you know, it's it's available to not only us, but all the neighbors for any kind of activity, be it rental or otherwise in the neighborhood to manage parking. So I think that's well addressed. And we really haven't had a single complaint in the four years we've rented this property related to parking noise, anything. So I think Finger Lakes Premier Properties is managing this property very strictly per the documents we provided, quiet hours. Parking limitations on occupancy per the permit we have, which is twelve today, etc. So I I assume you folks are probably familiar with Finger Lakes Premier Properties. They've been around for a long time. They're very, very good and very strict in in managing to the use and rental agreement policies that they present to every renter.
Okay, board, do you have questions regarding? What was submitted or? Anything else you may have regarding this application?
I have nothing more to answer.
No additional questions.
So who does who owns the road if it's not an HOA?
The road, the road is owned by, and it's a bit of a long story, but the short answer is that the road and the common areas to the sides of both sides of the road are owned by all the homeowners on the Boulevard. And so that was granted via a court order about fifteen years ago. So we do all jointly own the road and those parking spots, etc. We just haven't chosen to formalize the HOA into a, you know, a separate tax ID, separate state identity, but but it is owned jointly by all the homeowners along the Boulevard.
An entity called WLB Group, Herschel Trudy A. as a whole?
Yeah, that's yeah, you got the right acronym. It's Westlake Boulevard Association.
So really, those five spaces, it's sort of first come, first served.
Right.
And I guess any concern would be would be if if renters for your property wind up monopolizing those five spaces. And I I think it was it was mentioned last month and or last meeting. And I assume it was in some of the literature that was provided that you wouldn't need more than six spaces. And I guess that leads me to try to decide is 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 was it the right occupancy? For six spaces. I mean, right now, you're six spaces for twelve. You're asking to go to eighteen. Though I think it was mentioned at the last meeting that sixteen was your previous occupancy, right?
Right. Sixteen is our current occupancy for parking by the home and and sleeping.
Would you have any problem with the special use permit limiting you to sixteen occupants?
No, no, not at all. That's what we had been doing prior to the town permitting process sixteen had no no issues. And and now it's twelve, of course, but yes, sixteen would be fine going forward.
It just makes me a little nervous. Six faces and they are kind of I won't say jammed down down below, but they're not laid out in a nice orderly manner that if you had sixteen occupants, six spaces could be challenged at some point, especially if you have people over during the day to visit the the tenants. Could happen.
Actually, that is not allowed. If you, I I realize you folks probably haven't read the details of the documents we provided, but in those documents, it says the occupancy limit is not only the people staying there, it is the total, including visitors.
Yeah, I do remember that. That's correct. Yep. So sixteen would be sixteen and sixteen max day and night. Okay.
That's right. That's correct.
So something we should have in the permit.
Well, look, the law has that special permit is about to limit that.
Yeah, he's willing to limit it to sixteen total. And never never exceed, never utilize the twice the occupancy that's provided in the law.
Okay. So in the first whereas paragraph, the special permit resolution says they receive you've received an application to operate an STR with a maximum overnight occupancy of eighteen. So I think we just add it to the conditions, make a condition number eleven saying maximum occupancy shall be sixteen. Then spell it out, write the number that needs thrown out.
And I think Mr. Whitmore is going as far to say that it will be sixteen. No more than sixteen during the day or during the sleepover. So it because our local allows for twice the number of occupants.
Yep.
And that would be thirty two. So.
Is it number twelve? Daytime visitors?
Or if I anything contrary to what you how you're feeling this jump in.
Yeah.
Okay.
Including all guests and visitors.
The ordinance allows why are we if the ordinance allows it, why are we then making a special restriction?
I have a concern about the parking. I think six, I think sixteen is pushing it. Eighteen is really pushing it for just six spaces. And I think it it'll require or probably wind up. We'll find out that the five spaces up top would be used more often if they have eighteen people. Mr. Whitmore said he doesn't need eighteen.
I understand. I understand. And it is tight.
Yeah.
Yeah, the whole property situation is very tight then.
Yeah, I drove in the other day. It's tight. It is a six bedroom house, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I understood that. At least what I had heard from the town staff was the parking, I don't know if this is an actual regulation, but it was like you need to have at least one parking slot per bedroom is what I understood.
Correct. Is it a six bedroom?
Because
Yes. I've got the printout from Finger Lakes and it says batteries one through five. Where is the additional? I was trying to do the math to figure out where sixteen or eighteen would go.
We put a pullout couch in our family room area that has closed doors.
Well, it's not really a bedroom.
Well, it is. That's true, but it does have closed doors with the bathroom right outside the door. So we kind of made it into a better, yes, so there was I mean, five plus plus one.
Okay, and you have six parking spaces.
Okay.
Chuck, do you want to?
Excuse me?
It it seems like it might become an enforcement issue. If anybody stops, if they've got a meant that they're if they're overnighting at capacity at sixteen and anybody stops by, they're in violation. You want to give a little, say eighteen. Both daytime, sixteen overnight. Eighteen total during the day.
Well, their own their own their regulations have no more than sixteen. And it was pretty hard or risky. But they would pay a fine. They didn't.
Seems like it's they had called in. I saw eighteen people there. Right now, where
It'll also be violating. Something you I didn't have anything to do with us, but I think.
We're very likely supposed to be for you.
It doesn't. Oh, I mean.
Code says that you can have visitors, right?
Up to twice.
Yeah.
Double double your during during the day, you can have twice your overnight. Uh, in this, but that's why we instituted a special use permit process for larger short term rentals is because that would be thirty six. That could be thirty six people, and that's a ton of people. This property can't really support thirty six people unless they all come in by party bus. Because there's just not parking, or maybe there is for those five guest spots, but see my point.
Yeah, I just I don't know whether we want to get into business of regular if they've already have written self imposed regulation. On how many people?
Yeah, so so well, they have, yeah, they have a self imposed regulation. That's true.
Okay, so does the town need to get in into that regulation?
We're into it.
What if that self imposed is removed down the line and it's it still doesn't change our concern for the parking options in the flow process on the Boulevard? Is it just a secure this second layer of cushion there?
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me that it is. I think on all of these. I mean, the the code says you can have twelve without a special use permit. If you're going to go over twelve, you need a special use permit or an added level of review and the ability to impose conditions. So in the special use permit, I would think it would be advisable for you to set the the maximum overnight and the maximum daytime guests for in all special use. That's the whole point of it coming to you. Otherwise, we could, you know, it could be administrative, just like twelve and under.
You know, and considering that there's some concern from the neighbors and they're willing to to limit.
Okay, it's sixteen and sixteen to.
Okay. Yeah, it's conforms to what Finger Lakes has in their brochure. It conforms to what the applicant is asking for. So I think all we're doing is endorsing what those other two documents have. All right. Anybody in the audience?
There shouldn't be any with 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 all of those measures in place. There shouldn't really be a need for those other parking spaces, so.
Well.
Yeah, let's change let's change that up.
Anybody who's ever been to the lake, any lake, people park on, see if they're going to use those if there's daytime guests, I think some people, just because it's in the driveway.
But they're playing combatives for wall parking that they would
Yeah, that would make sense. Okay.
Sarah, do you have a comment?
Just a just something that maybe asked. So for all applications for short term rental comments. For what for which the maximum occupancy for overnight would be twelve. They won't ever come to the planning board unless we change our law, right? And those people can all have twenty four people during the day.
Regardless of their margins situation?
Parking is a matter of number of bedrooms, not people. So if it's about four bedrooms, we require at least four parking spaces, except for six spaces. Based on our
So the code doesn't address the guest part?
Daytime guest project? No.
Which could be problematic.
But we don't address it. I have not in the current law.
But they don't address it at any of your houses either. And if you throw a party with twenty four people, a bunch of people are going to park in the street. And that's legal during most times of the year during six, seven months out of the year. You're allowed to park on the street unless otherwise it's it's no parking zone. People are going to park on the street down the road and have to walk. If somebody's having twenty four people over during the day, every single day of the summer. Then I think it becomes an issue for code enforcement to deal with in terms of the other regulations imposed in our short term rental code, including not creating a nuisance, not being a problem.
Events.
Yeah, well, and events. That's the that's the other really good point. That's the other check on twenty four people being there is that you're not allowed to have that. So. Yeah.
Okay, Ken, I'm going to go out to anyone here or out TV land if they'd like to address the board regarding this application. No, I think we're ready to move on. Okay, so this is a type two seeker. And there, I'm sure is, do we need to go through the code like we did last time? Did you do it for this one last time? We, I'm not sure if we did, but he, they have a written document that looks like it answered every single question on it. So yeah, I want to make sure.
Okay. I put that in the minutes that they the planning board acknowledged the written documents that addressed the special use permit criteria. And they're satisfied that the items contained therein cover cover.
Just to be consistent.
I don't think you're getting out of going through each thing every time.
Well, that's something we talked about here. So there's no site plan for this. Scripted plans submitted, so we're strictly looking at a special use permit for the operation of the short term rental. So can I get a motion on the seeker type two?
I'm making a motion to accept the seeker type two. Excuse me, for CPN twenty four oh nine one, thirty four oh seven West Lake Boulevard.
Okay, or second? Motion second. All in favor?
Bye.
Okay, let's move on to the special.
I make a motion to accept special use permit for CPN twenty four oh ninety one, thirty four oh seven West Lake Boulevard.
Suggest it. Wait, you got some with the ten conditions written, one about maximum occupancies being sixteen?
Max occupancy shall be no more than sixteen. We have guests and visitors in that.
I'll cycle that with the eleven conditions.
Yeah, we call it something.
Yeah, I would.
All right, that the only additional condition?
Unless you have others.
Unless I have others? No signage? Not bad. I was just thinking about the Finger Lakes Premier Properties hangs a sign out usually sometime in front.
We started that discussion in the office.
Okay, let's know sometime when you figure it out.
They have one there. There's Finger Lakes, like just. Yeah, and the
Yes. Yes, and and the addresses, they clearly just wanted a better address and they probably first.
Okay, I have a motion.
From the second.
Yeah.
With eleven.
One second. But can we?
Tim motion.
Timming motion. We got a motion and second it for the discussion. All in favor?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, folks. Thank you, Mr. Whitmore.
Thank you.
All right, let's move right along. We got CPN twenty twenty four one oh five on Cisery. Presented by Scott Harder to amend the approved site plan. Uh, that is site plan twenty four oh fifty two. And there are some changes made to the house, the driveway and the septic systems.
Yes, that is correct. Hi.
Honor time. Hi, Scott.
I'm Scott Harder, representing Mount Cisery. We are here for amended site plans approval. There were some changes made as we started construction based on the owner's overview of the placement of the houses we had staked out. And and perhaps consideration of future use such as a pool that may not have been considered as timely as we would have liked. So as a result, the waste floor system was shifted to the southeast away from the revised house location and the orientation of the house was changed based on the orientation that the owner wanted. The driveway was shortened by about eighty nine feet. The finished floor was dropped about a foot and a half. The property is about thirty acres in size. There's no real impact to anything we had originally proposed, although admittedly, things are different. So we're here to seek your approval to continue the project. We've got to stop construction, but the driveway is in and contractor is preparing to install the utilities and commence where we stopped in early September.
Board, any questions? I tried to find your old plan and your new plan. I can tell me I'm looking at the new plan right there. How much has it changed? I mean?
I I did another sheet that I included
I couldn't find that one.
In in the submittal, I don't know if you can go to the the cloud and
See, right there, yeah.
Um, let's see. Right, but there's another one that I provided that shows exactly what.
It's like an overlay.
Would you, um, let's see.
The revised or ZO comments?
Yeah, the comparison drawing. Is it? Yeah.
Down.
Keep going down. Comparison drawing right there. Please click on that, yeah.
Oh, it's labeled as email core.
So if you zoom in a little bit. Other way. Magnify. Magnify a little more. So you can see the outline of the original house location. And you can in light line weight.
Yeah.
And you can see the proposed house location in dark line weight. Likewise, you can see the original Leechfield location in light line weight. And the proposed Leechfield location in dark line weight.
Yeah.
So I produced that drawing for that particular reason. So I'm glad you were able to find it because I thought it would make things clear.
Yeah, very helpful. Yeah, I found it.
And and it also shows, as I mentioned, the shortening of the driveway by approximately eighty nine.
What's your distance got between your the next, the last pull off to your end of your last pull off? My question is, you need the middle.
Um, the the pull off that we show there, the one that's closest to the end of the driveway, is that what you mean?
Well, there's, yeah, the your rule is two. Well, there's, yeah, your rule is two hundred and fifty feet. I didn't wonder how far that is.
Each, each one of those pull-offs were, was originally set and they are actually constructed um, at two hundred and fifty feet.
Close to the house now, it's.
We're, we're, we're still about a hundred feet from the end of the drive and the turnaround, so. I mean, it's a lot of pullovers.
It is, and it's a long walk up there.
So I can have a big party and have parking on site.
Don't get my days.
Unlike your other application that you had.
And no events at this house, right? Anybody else?
Is the, you said that the pool is a potential?
Yes.
Okay, it's not set percent here and probably.
Right, there'll be a, another um, project that happened in the future, however, when we did the Leachfield design originally relative to the original house location, um, it became obvious that that could interfere with future pool that would be down slope of the residence, so we made that change.
Is that a standard leach bed or did per fair?
Um, we did get percolation rates up on the hill, um, which is where this is. We originally tested for about for the potential of fourteen lots. And we looked at frontage lots and I think we appeared before you with some conceptual plans.
Yeah.
Um, the owner, however, and, and we pursued sanitary sewer options with Ontario County. Um, but, uh, we weren't able to get Ontario County to really, um, come on board, even though there is a sanitary sewer manhole right at the end of West Ridge Run. Uh, coincidentally, um, so the owner decided he wanted to proceed with the project, then we didn't have sewers, so we went with septic, but the, but the soils are okay.
All right, you don't have to do raise because you changed your location.
No, it, it is raised. It's the same system was raised.
Same system or rate?
Raised in both locations. It's largely clay soil.
The new locations behind that tree line, which are probably high in the raised bed.
Right, correct. It's actually staked out this time.
Are you making out with DOH? Was it Kendall Larson was reviewing?
Kendall Larson, um, I've been in touch with him and he, as of two days ago, referred the application over to Tyler for any final comments. So I think we're very close to approving that and, and the initial comments that Kendall provided were pretty minor.
And I think we have that in here. Some condition.
You, you allowed us to.
The original plan.
Yeah, to postpone that to the C of all.
Right.
Because of the pace at which, um, these waste floor system reviews take place.
Okay, uh, you seem to be clear with Jim Fletcher. Uh, he said you, the water issues and things to take care of there. He says something about a need for a sign in Little Cheshire Road. Is he talking about a driveway sign? I, I'm not sure what Jim.
We showed, we showed us, we showed the, uh, note relative to the sign, I think if you zero one, I think it's there. Um, just above the driveway connection, I think.
I can't, what, what does it signify?
Um, I think Jim wanted a sign indicating that the driveway was coming up because there is a pullover area there for West Ridge Run. I think he wanted a notification sign to be, um, kind of an identifier to southbound traffic. I believe.
What's on there?
Um, provide a, a sign installed on the west side of the highway right of where indicating the new driveway connection. The Middle Cheshire Road, the exact location and sign type to be determined by the town. Highway superintendent.
All right, well, we have Jim being happy with what's proposed as part of the condition, so.
Okay.
I can barely see it.
I knew it was on the plan somewhere.
We, we did, that was just us, there's a, you know, minutes done for that, but, um, you just, uh, referred to our previous comments, so there was something.
Okay, landscaping native, that's, that's, that's. Just question, are you disregrading either side of the putting green? Is that done for what reason?
I think the owner took advantage of topsoil that was being excavated when the road was boxed out, and I think he decided to dress up some of the work that he had done with his putting green. It certainly wasn't anything that was revealed to me.
No, I, I know you said that.
However, um, Mike asked that we show the areas that were affected, which we've done and outlined, and they've been stabilized and there's silt vents out there. We've spoken with the owner about not proceeding with any more of that until the project is.
Put your shovel away. Okay, uh, you, the slip in the NOI.
That's, that's still in progress, it's still.
And more be have any other comments on this application? I know you had it on the original. Okay. Does anyone have any further issues, discussion? Would anybody in the audience like to address the board regarding this application? If not, uh, seeker was taken care of with the original approval, so don't have to worry about that. So we're looking at an amended single-stage site plan. And, uh, someone wants to look at what's proposed and make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve amended single-stage site plan at CPN twenty-four one oh five on Middle Cheshire Road. The lot number's not here. Uh, with the current nine conditions.
One second then.
Okay, other motions, second, uh, Eric, the revision date, the last, last plan was ten-three. That was the one that added the, uh, expanded limits of disturbance and additional goal course. Uh, all these conditions still apply? Then even like, we can tick off? Did you put the note on the plans of all alone there? It should be seated and established? Okay. Watership we got. You, did you label the site distance?
Yes.
Driveway?
It's, it's below the note, but, but the signs.
So maybe we can. Narrow it down to seven. Does that sound good to work? Okay.
You're saying as long as it's on the one that we've got approved, not that shadow change.
Yeah, the ten-three revision has.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, definitely got a motion. Motion is, okay, down both. Drifted off there. All right, further discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
That one's, that one's done. Might as well not leave the booty.
I guess I have one more.
Yep. Uh, we'll move on to CPN twenty-twenty-four thirteen. Uh, Allen County Route sixteen. Requesting a one-year extension of the true plan uh, before signing and the original approval was back in October of last year. And, uh, yes, Scott, uh, you want to tell us why you're asking for an extension?
Um, we're asking for an extension because we have not started, um, construction yet. They aren't ready to start building yet. Uh, we were before your zoning board, I think it was in July, asking for an extension to the variants associated with this as well. Um, they've pretty much dedicated most of their um, efforts to fifty-two seventy-one, which is the adjoining property on the lake, and that was remodeled, and I think the site plan is being signed off as we speak for that. We're going to be starting the related site work in the next week or so, I believe. So they've changed their priorities and, and this one, which I think technically has an address of fifty-two seventy-two, Mentis Drive, um, that's, that was put on the back burner, um. There was a lot of work put into getting the approval for that. I'm certainly well aware of that and we just wanna maintain what we've achieved, uh, would not have to redo it if possible.
Scott, was that problem with RG and E, power going through there?
The, the power lines going through the woodlot?
Yeah.
Yeah, as part of that, um, i- if you were to take a look further in our, um, maybe it's shown on that, I, I can't, can't exactly see, but we're proposing to remove all the electric and go underground from Westlake Road and bring it around.
And RG and E, I think last discussion, I remember there was a problem with RG and E.
Well, I think there was a, I think there was a problem with RG and E, um, they considered doing that sooner than later and, um, someone had not been in touch with RG and E to authorize them to proceed and um, they required a certain amount of money to do what needed to be done and and then fifty-two seventy-one to priority and it's been tabled, I guess.
Yeah.
But, but to answer your question, yes, the electric is proposed to come down, would be very wouldn't work very well with our design.
Have there, I know this was a property that had a lot of discussion.
Yes.
Have there been any natural events, uh, occurred since last year that would change your, natural weather events? Would have changed your thinking as to how you have that laid out with the, uh, oh, you have an easement across the front, I know for conveyance of the water, any runoff that may jump the banks and uh, no reason to reconsider any of that or change it or?
Well, I think the, the storm that we had a year ago, July fourth, verified exactly the way the water flows across that property. It, it definitely follows the contours that we have shown and the elevations that I show on my grading plan, if you wanna scroll down for that. They put the house up significantly um, while preserving that flow route through and across the driveway and onto the vacant parcel. So I, I wouldn't make any, I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any changes, but I, I felt, um, uh, that our design had been validated that way. And you may have also noticed that we did a, um, bank stabilization project on the property across the street by the waterfall. Or we reinforced the bank there and that required quite an approval from the D E C because Mentis Creek is a trout stream. And, uh, we went back and forth on that with the D E C for almost a year. And we finally got the design that we thought was appropriate and we finally got them to agree. And that held on that Fourth of July date. We, we lost one of the holders. So I, I think we have a, a good understanding of what goes through there, but as you know, with respect to hurricanes and things that were seen nationwide and such, we never have a hundred percent uh, certainty in everything we do, but I think we've have taken it into consideration and tried to do a good job.
Kim, you wanna scroll down to the landscape plan? Just refreshment and that. That's the tree, yeah, that was.
That was.
Part of the discussion.
Right. And then there was a it, it was recommended and, and I believe the landscape architect put in a planting mix along that potential overflow area of a certain type of lawn.
All right, do you see any reason why this couldn't be resolved in the coming year? Do you have a sign and?
Um, I'd sure like to see it. Include.
All right, board, your thoughts, feelings? Okay with?
I'm okay.
All right.
You got an extension. The second one-year extension on your stream set that period.
Right.
Right?
Correct.
That expires.
The applicant has a year.
Next July.
For.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm nudging them.
So, yeah, you get it done before July. Cause that's building permit, right? That's not just, this is just signing the plan, right?
Right.
So that's more critical than this, but hey, we're critical. All right, do, uh, Chris, we okay to move on?
Yes.
I have a motion to grant the extension.
I'll make that motion to grant the one-year extension for CPN twenty-two zero one eight at fifty-two seventy-two.
One second. Motion and second. Have you really submitted a revised plan per se, or are we still fluid with the, uh, plan that was revised last July twenty-sixth?
That's, that's still the same. I, I haven't issued a new plan. We're, we're still going with the one.
Okay, there was no, in, in the interest of asking, requesting the extension, you did not amend the plan.
Correct.
All right, so it's still the twenty-sixth. Two thousand twenty-three, very good. Okay, a motion and second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, very much appreciated.
Coming out. All righty, uh. Yeah, the, uh, next item is twenty-twenty-four oh eighty-eight, uh, regarding uptown landing. Uh, if you recall, we did do a, uh, review of this and offered to the board for their consideration as part of the, uh, zoning change to, uh, Senate zoning, uh, report, which they have, uh, Sarah, maybe you wanna tell us how this is progressing as far as the zoning.
Yeah, so, um, last month, the town board, um, set a public hearing for this project for the October twenty-eighth town board meeting, um, which kicked in order of native seeker review and referral to the county planning board. So those things are in the works right now, which is one of the reasons you're seeing it again, even though there's not any major changes. County, I think, the meeting is tomorrow. So we do have their staff comments, but not, not their chief comments, so it's, I mean, it's going through the motions, it's going through the process, it's moving along. Um, the town board could, um, have a preliminary approval on October twenty-eighth, which would then set in motion the ability for them to come apply for site plan review of the planning board, probably something like a preliminary overall, I guess. Okay. So, you know, obviously we don't know what the town board's going to do. If they'll do that on the twenty-eighth, or if they'll continue.
The town board did declare themselves the lead agency on the seeker. Or they intend to. They declared their intent to be. Okay. It was a declaration of intent, okay. And I guess we have an opportunity, if we feel for any reason shouldn't be town board, it should be somebody else, we can certainly respond with that. I don't see any reason to do that.
Um, the way the seeker's been worked for this, I mean, it's, you know, we've all heard it. Planning Federation training is about illegal segmentation of secret. We are going to separate seeker, not segment them. Segmenting usually comes when you're doing one piece of land when another's about to be developed.
Sure.
Separating it is, uh, is per action. Separating it is uh is per action. Town board is going to take an action, actions are what seeker is subject to. Uh and their action is granting incentives zones. Your action will be granting site plan approval. Um Eric and Lance Braybant and I have discussed it along with Sarah, the town manager. Uh John Felbo and uh do you think it would be appropriate to do two separate seekers, two different actions? The environmental impacts of the town board. Um. Town boards' actions are much different than the site plan, uh environmental impacts, that being said. I'm assuming that's Matt on online, I don't imagine any uh. Anything beyond standard seeker review, full environmental assessment forms. Uh and part two and part three being completed by this board. I don't think uh after your review, Eric, you're soon recommending any further seeker review beyond what the board has proposed, correct?
Yeah, Chris, this is Matt Tomlinson from Marathon, uh just to clarify, so would that be a consistency? Review to uh make a consistency finding on seeker, or you're talking about separate findings being issued? And the reason I ask that is because the size, we are a type one, so I would not want to. Make the project subject to another coordinated review if it is going to be separated. Cause that that would, I think, uh fall into uh segmentation if we do two separate coordinated reviews. With different lead agencies. A- and I don't know that there's any desire to do so, uh on the towns end, certainly not on the developers end.
That's something uh we're gonna have to think about, that might be a very good point.
Okay, so we have done uh several large projects in the city of Rochester who who handle it that way, where it's a consistency review, meaning. Further detail that is presented at the site plan, which is typical for large projects like this, where it's uh. Reviewed consistent with the findings of the lead agency that did the coordinated review. And of course, if there's any amendment that needs to be made, it can be done so, but it's only at the. I'll call it lower board, not meaning that in a derogatory way, but the subsequent board's uh findings or review. When additional detail is provided for the project.
Can you give me a call, Mr. that talk about how that how you've seen that handled? Um and I'll coordinate with you and M R B and we'll we'll figure something out.
I would be happy to, yep, no problem. Okay, and and I'm sorry, just just for a clarification on my part, cause I I apologize, I'm not there, I have to be in Victor tonight, but um. Is this going to be a continuing planning board item until we come back for preliminary? Or is it intended that this is the last uh time on the agenda till we make formal site plan application?
Last time on the agenda until we make formal site plan application.
Okay, thank you, just wanted to make sure I didn't miss something, thank you.
I guess the other thing for that vacation, uh Marathon, the applicant did submit a. Revised narrative as to the amenities. Uh to be provided and they were based, or they had considered some of the recommendations we had. Put into our advisory report, so I don't know if if you didn't look at that read over. I guess it's it's in the uh, it's in the file for, okay. Yeah, they 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 looked at the items that we mentioned and then. Accepted one or two and others, they said could be considered at a later date, either with. Other funding or uh uh at another time, uh. Not place, but another time, so look it over, I just wanted to make sure that the board was aware that that document. It's in the cloud, I couldn't.
Yeah, um on September thirteenth, they uploaded.
So let's not spend any more time on that, so that's uh. I don't think any actions are required on our part.
Do you want to, I guess, just make the decision that the agency playing for? Has no objections to the town board, assuming the agency.
Yeah, we don't. So I, we could do it by motion or by consensus, just have it reflected in the minutes.
Consensus to do nothing would be a great way to enhance.
Okay, so uh the consensus is we're doing nothing. All right, let's uh look at the minutes from uh back in September, the twenty-fourth, I think was the meeting date. Sure.
On a project of that size, is it typical that the new traffic study provided demonstrate that the level of service or?
Yeah, absolutely. Um and they have done one, um in your cloud, you'll see an enhanced environmental assessment. Report, I think it's entitled.
Expanded E A F.
Expanded E A F report, um which takes the categories in an environmental assessment form and sort of. Gives you a, some documentation for each of the topics you're supposed to address procedure. And for traffic, they did a full traffic report. Several hundred, several hundred pages.
Okay, you good, Tim?
Yes.
All right, let's move on to the minutes from the twenty-fourth of September. Any additions, corrections, what uh Karina sent out? This is the last draft, not. Make a motion. Here again, motion of second, and third discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we have uh no certainties to release. And uh other business uh. Sarah, I'd like to make some changes to our, propose some changes to our rules and procedure. Already deadlines and there was one reference to the short-term realm that I guess no longer applies, right?
I think I emailed everybody last week, the red line that we were asking to take a look at, item seven A. Changing it from noon to eleven fifty-nine P M, it'd just be easier for staff. Um I think it's a lot easier for the applicants to have the whole working day rather than half the working day. You always get some stragglers coming in and wanting to three o'clock, it seems most months, so this would. Prevent them having the way to move in and to come and talk to us. Um and then even looking and creating this red line, I noticed there's an old carryover um under. Further section, um the old short-term rental law. I had a reference about um special use, that it was a special use permit, and this is. Going that quite a ways before this last iteration, and so I think I'm G on the. Whatever number that is, eight, um I think. Since none of that applies anymore, we just remove it. It references a law that doesn't exist anymore, yep.
Okay, that's that's continuation, G.
Yeah.
Oh, even though it's not.
Has a letter one.
Oh, okay. Okay. Word understand uh what's being asked?
Yep.
Okay, uh someone's in favor of changing our rules and procedure, I guess we need a motion.
I'll make that motion to update the rules of procedure based on the red line provided by Sarah.
Motion second, for the discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so you'll take those changes.
Yep, and I don't remember if I told you those, but those only were approved the same change.
Okay, uh. I guess as far as progress with our tree and shrub list, um I know Edith did an introduction. So I guess it's still a work in progress in terms of.
It is.
I guess anything we have to think about, and we discussed it the last minute, is how we're gonna treat this list? Is it gonna be a guideline? I don't think we want to make a local law, of course. Uh I think it's just a guideline that's provided to an applicant and these are suggested. Yeah, trees and shrubs and landscaping items and would you consider them and uh we've. We've been pretty tough on guidelines sometimes, so I think we can, we can also apply that toughness to uh to this uh. This also, so.
Chuck, can we make sure that they get it early on in the plant buying process, like a P R C, so that they don't have to come to us and. They need to have it early.
Yeah, it'd be nice to have it on the plants before they're even seated.
Yeah.
Well, if we put the, if we post the guidelines and they know they're there, they're. Take a look at.
And then the more that we.
Then we come to, yeah, the more they come familiar with them.
Your regulars.
Right.
Certainly they'll, and they'll know, but yeah.
Yeah.
Further, folks should come and submit an application and they can talk to us and board us next. We could certainly, you know, give it to them as a resource, say, help from it, like we do some other information. Um documents, um. Can we put it on the website like we do with our shoreline guidelines and so?
Guidelines, yeah.
Um we can make it available.
Yeah.
They won't notice it, you'll see it, uh.
Will you mention it in P R C?
Yeah.
And I, I think, you know, E C B can, it's one of the things you'll be looking at, I guess, as part of your review. Uh, you know, we have so many other things to look at in terms of playing board, but certainly I think. Uh you would look at the guidelines, look at the plans and say, hey, we're we're foul, or we're good. Okay, uh so, yeah, keep uh, what I've seen so far is very interesting, yeah. Yeah, I liked the, I liked Edith's uh order, what she wrote. Uh, it's October, folks, uh we're getting near the end of the year as far as uh training. There are a lot of sessions coming up uh on the nineteenth of February, excuse February.
Wait a second, hold on.
Too late, we're headed to the end of the year. November the nineteenth, the Planning Federation has a comp plan, uh learn at lunch session. Uh, so then on the back in October, back to tomorrow, in fact. The county has an ag training webinar from six to eight tomorrow night. On the. All about uh farms and zoning for farms and farm stands, that kind of stuff. Uh ten twenty-six, the Planning Federation has a session on regulated controversial uses. Again, it's a turn at lunch session. You're something the twenty-four, oh, short-term rentals, twenty-fourth October.
Is it another one of those?
Yeah. Uh. So uh get your, get your hours in if you don't have them, that includes me. So uh. Don't want the wrath of uh. Wrath of Khan coming down on us, beginning of January. All right, anything else uh the board has? Anything else staff has? So our next meeting is the twenty-second, the agenda's already been put out. I'll say you have a heads up as to what's coming. And that's all being said, I'm done.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm sorry, um we almost made it less than an hour, um. If we have any. Um, short-term rentals, there's a short-term rental on Smith that's listed on Airbnb for thirteen people. And uh there's been some overnight guests, there's been a lot of parking there. Should I notify you, send an over email or other folks of like, hey, I see this, I don't know if I. Can of worms here, but.
If you notify me, we will prompt you to fill out.
Okay.
But I think it'd be a great idea to at least. Make you aware of it.
Yeah.
Well.
But tracking it becomes hard without the complete.
Okay.
I was gonna say, isn't that a cloud thing?
Yes, we also, well, and it's not, actually today it went live, but we do have um. Our host compliance software, which is the software that's tracking all of our short-term rentals.
Oh wait, it just went live today?
Today.
Oh, never mind. Yeah.
Well, we.
I can test.
I wanted to test. I was thinking you were already live. The complaints is a, is a forty-five dollar five.
Excuse me, what?
We now have a twenty-four hour plane hotline system, it will be answered by the really. Oh, even like a phone call, you can submit it.
Is it you?
Line.
Not you.
Is that a formal complaint that would go against their record?
Yeah, but it should be, helps us track it, so it's not just an email.
I had a conversation with a gentleman that said, I complained about something and it never got.
Oh, no.
Because you issue a complaint, it doesn't mean that the town will bring those impacts.
It's not valid.
So, so it doesn't mean it's.
I'm not.
Gonna affect them.
I'm just opening the conversation.
Older versions of the short-term rental law had things like two-strike, two complaints in your vehicle. Which, you know, you get a problematic neighbor, they all have to do is submit two complaints and you're losing your.
I mean, code enforcement checks it out.
So that's code enforcement checks it out and uses their judgment.
Yep.
This, the same judgment they use in all the complaints, building code, zoning code. You know, the the judgment for town operating.
And oh, and complaints can always start these in the past time, but we have a new one, so.
Okay.
We're gonna figure out how to use it, we're gonna get the word out, but yeah, it's got an online form. You can actually fill out, or you can phone call if you don't want to use the form.
Okay.
It's pretty nice, it gives you a chance for pictures if they want to and stuff like that. I can all for a short-term round, but we haven't publicized it yet because we just got the confirmation from the company today that.
Okay.
Okay, we've been testing it for a while.
Cool. Okay. Okay, that would commit complaint to you all, got it, okay.
Where is it, is it online or no? Sarah?
The new, no, we don't have a link to it.
Oh.
If you want me to.
It was literally an email that came to us.
Be a tester, I.
You got a few to put in?
Tester.
No, but I, my neighbor. Or neighbors. Neighbors, they're complaining against you.
No.
Don't tell them, don't tell them where it is.
Chuck, I got two real quick, they, one, the code enforcement officer. Um asked to, it's give give more time when you're asking for inspections. Like Kevin last time, they got it done, but he said it's really stressing, he told Chuck that, but I just thought it was important to know. Why Chuck is saying, oh, that's a journey.
Well, I, I think the word to address that is P R C.
Yeah, yes, but if there's something at, if it comes up at our meeting, a planning board meeting, it's just asking. Not to do it to the meeting two weeks later, do it to.
To the next month.
Uh but yes, your suggestion that we initiate the request for um code enforcement.
Well, it was because of the code, when we were reading code that night, we got to that point in code and we didn't have anything to validate. That right?
Nope. It was the first of these that came through staff, P R C and this board, so.
Yes.
Either way, we will keep that in mind.
Yeah, and then the other thing I thought might be useful. Um. For short-term rentals especially, but in general, um special use permits, they all require a statement of operations. I've never seen any that are remotely similar or that. Special use permits, they all require statements of operations, I've never seen any that are remotely similar or that. Ever get everything you need to know on the first shot, so maybe a list if you wanted to email it to staff. So they could, you know, I like to see the following things for my statement of operation. And they can give, give applicants more guidance.
If they have some place in.
The code spelled out.
It's some hours of operation, I think that's all.
Code spelled out.
If there's stuff you wanna see, let's just list it out, even if it's already in the code. Cause I think applicants struggle with that, what do you want me to write? You know, what's this, I rented, so the more guidance we can give them, the more of what you wanna see, you can get, I agree, it's in the code. But it's not that comprehensive as to what I think you guys generally want to see. So if you think of stuff you wanna see, let staff know so they can start telling you up with it, so. That's all.
I think that advertising brochure, the brochure that fingered like sprout leaves uses that. That's almost the state of operations in terms of that, every, every issue that could, you know, trash. I'm keeping, keeping things quiet, hours, quiet hours and all that. So that's, anything listed in that type of document would. Hardly good to see in the state of operations or supply that's done.
Yeah. We've done two when we've had one of them.
All right, perfect, anybody else?
Motion to adjourn at seven eleven.
I will accept that motion.
Aye.
Motion second, all in favor? Thank you, everyone.